By the way, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a roll call please?
Sure. Mr. Chrisen.
Here.
Mr. Fedorcho.
Here.
Ms. Franz.
Here.
Ms. Husak.
Here.
Mr. Van Norman.
Here.
Ms. Culp.
Here.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public comment, do we have the sheet, anyone?
We have two guests that have signed in this evening and neither have indicated that they would like to participate in public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you've all received copies of the school board meeting held September 8th, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No move.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any question, any addition on the motions? Do we, none of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And so ordered. Special Board reports, CLIU, Ms. Husak.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We did have our board meeting in September, where our next board meeting will be next Monday, 6:30 in the CLIU boardroom. Just a handful of things coming up, our winter basket raffle begins November-December timeframe. It's raffles you can purchase online and they do send those tickets to you and you can choose the basket. That money does go to our special needs children's foundation for items like the adaptive bikes or at the time, adaptive toys for the holiday season for our students that may need some different type of toy to play with to be able to have some fun at the holidays. So, ask if you can go on, the website is available, you're welcome to go on to there to get tickets. Speaking of the website, there is a new CLIU website, it was just updated and put out. One of the areas that I would let our folks here know as well as our administration and staff, there is a link to the new event center. So, the IU has updated that website to have a specific area that's called the event center that will allow and get you simplified access to some of their professional development opportunities, things that are coming up, you can go on and see what's available, when and where. So, that has been a really big hit so far, so if you have some time, administration, take a look at that. There's a whole ton of professional development opportunities available. Again, our next meeting is next week, if anybody has anything you'd like me to take back, please let me know, thank you.
How's your puppy dog doing?
We now have three of them.
Oh, you have three of them.
There are three beautiful puppies that, she was just at the last meeting, so.
Okay.
They've come to all the buildings, our latest is at the IU building itself.
Okay.
For early education, so, yes, they are out and about.
They're out and about. Mr. Fedorcho, what's happening at LCTI?
Thank you. We have brought on board and she has begun now as our new business manager. We also approved the calculation for board seats, there's 21 board members on, unfortunately Northern Lehigh being the smallest, we only have one member. Let's see, what else do I have here? We also have a waiting list, there's 45 programs at LCTI right now, 2,500 students, and we have a waiting list, as I said at the last meeting, for a number of students. We have also created another cosmetology and vet tech program, but we still have students waiting after that yet in those two programs. So, we're doing very well with getting our enrollment up, but we're not very well in accommodating the enrollment. And in a number of cases where students did not get their first choice, they had an opportunity to take a second or third choice. In many cases, they have accepted that, but if they do not want, then they do return back to the home school. So, right now, we're doing very well and we also redid, re-approved our school calendar with some changes. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks, here. Ms. Snyder, anything?
Just that we are now over 100 days without a state budget, so. So, yeah.
Thank you. Down at the community college, enrollment is kind of steady from last year, which is a good thing, but it's also down a couple percent from a few years ago, which is not a good thing, but I think a lot of schools are experiencing that and the college is doing everything they can to increase that, meeting with school districts for dual enrollment, et cetera, et cetera, and we'll see what happens. Currently going through a middle states evaluation similar to what school districts go through. I never realized it was as involved as it is, but there's apparently an awful lot to it, a lot of people working hard on that. We had some bonds come due and we did not refinance them, we put them into cash because as Ms. Snyder said, we have no budget, so there's money going out of your pocket, say thank you to your legislators. I have no idea what's going on. Our president told us at the last meeting that she had conversation with both members of the senate and members of the house and asked them what's happening and they're all like, I don't know, it's the other guys, I don't, you know, and there's no firm committed answers from any of them. So, God knows where that's going to go, but we're still in the same position and there's a motion tonight to take some action by our board, so hopefully we will approve that motion and we'll move from there. And that's kind of all I have. Any questions? No, any questions for anybody? Okay, you all got a bunch of minutes there to take care of.
Mr. Green, I do believe some of our guests that came in late, at least one of them signed in to speak at public comment. Was it you, Mr. King?
It was an on agenda, I don't, that's at the end, right?
Would you like to do, okay, thank you.
At the end, just fine.
Very good, thank you.
At the end, on a particular item or just at the end of the meeting?
It's an on agenda item, I thought that had to be at the end.
Okay.
Thank, I didn't know which one it was, so I figured I would just give you the opportunity now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Over, I want to committee reports. Highlight of the evening, ta-da!
Good evening, everyone, it's lovely to see everyone again. Tonight, Maddie and I will be reviewing the events and activities that are happening in our school. So, last Thursday, we held our annual bonfire, which was in the middle school parking lot. Even though there was no fire, so it was technically just a bon. There were many clubs who had stands that were selling like baked goods or they were selling just foods in general. And then before the homecoming game on the 10th, student council had their homecoming parade. Thank you to all the students and faculty who helped set up the parade, people who came and supported, everyone who did in a truck for the parade and the first responders who participated in the parade, it is very much appreciated to everyone who helped. During the football, during the homecoming football games halftime, homecoming court as well as king and queen were announced. Congratulations to this year's king and queen, which were, which was Kayden Novicki and Natalie, nope, and Elitage. This past Saturday was the homecoming dance, we had over 300 students who attended the dance. Everyone that was in attendance had a great time. Over the past week, the high school's PBIS team has held assemblies that reinforce the bold expectations. The team is working to consistently report on students who represent the bold expectations. Clubs are starting to fundraise, so some of the clubs that are holding fundraisers are the Patriot Club and the Senior Class. So, Patriot Club is selling beef sticks and then the Senior Class is selling pies. PSATs are being held on the 15th, student council is holding their blood drive also on the 15th and many colleges are attending the high school, so some of the colleges are Mizor Cordia, Lebanon College and Cedar Crest College. They can all, if you would like to attend, students can sign up in the guidance office to visit them. Picture day makeups are on the 22nd in the auditorium. The first virtual day was today, the 13th. High school students were to respond to the Google form that Dr. Bali sent out by 11:00 a.m. this morning to be marked present for the day. And that's all I have for tonight, now Maddie is going to discuss sports and clubs.
Thank you, Olivia. So, already the end of the first walking period is quickly approaching, is quickly approaching, the last day is to be October 29th. Work on this year's fall play has already begun, One Stop Light Town comes support the Northern Lehigh Little Theater November 21st to the 23rd. Northern Lehigh esports team is first in the state in Rocket League with a record of four to zero. On September 27th, the band had their first showcase. With many of the fall sports coming to an end, we recognized leaving seniors through senior nights and we wish them the best of luck. For a sports recap, many sports have already ended with the only two still going being football and cross country. The next football game is this upcoming Friday, the 17th at Salisbury High School and cross country will be attending the Colonial League championship this Wednesday, the 15th. Now on to records, field hockey ended with a score of two to 13, boys soccer had a record of three to 11, girls soccer had a record of three to 11 and football currently has a record of four to two, thank you.
I have two questions for Olivia, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, do you have any information on esports because I heard they're doing very well, can you share any, any feedback?
I know that, so we have sports in Rocket League, Fortnite.
I think it's, there's also like one, it's more like Smash Brothers, I'm pretty sure there's also one.
But all of them, I'm pretty sure all of them we have winning records currently.
That's amazing, that's perfect, thank you.
So, hi, thank you, girls, I did invite Mrs. Teedman and one of the kind of leaders on the esports team, William, to come and actually give an update to the school board in November. And like our student reps shared this evening, Rocket League is four and oh, so one out of 49. Fortnite Zone Wars, does that sound correct? Fortnite Zone Wars, they're three and one, so they're ranked six out of 68 teams. Super Smash Brothers Ultimate is two and two, they're 32, 32nd out of 94 competitors. And Marvel Rivals are three and one, they are ranked eighth out of 41 teams. So, they are doing exceptionally well and we're hopeful that they will come and share a little bit more about their club and their activities in November.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very good.
Thank you, girls.
I have two questions for you. 300 students at the dance? That's amazing, I think that's fantastic that we have that kind of participation, that's great, thank you. And the second thing is, when you introduced your colleague, what did you call her?
Maddie.
Maddie.
Yeah.
Okay, just wondering, so it's Maddie, not Madeline? I'll probably think of some others before the year is over, but that's okay, so, thank you for your participation, appreciate it, as always. Never is much fun to solicit a report.
Nothing, no, sir, it's hard to follow them.
Dr. Stoker?
Thank you, I'm going to go off script for a second and just draw everybody's attention to the boardroom and around the district office. We got our seals installed and our motto installed in various places. So, thank you to the school board for supporting that and I think it really shows our best foot forward in the district office when people come for interviews or come for meetings, so thank you for that support. On the board agenda for this evening, we are going to be doing our beginning of the year data presentation, so our principals are going to come up, starting with Mr. Schneiderite and he's going to be presenting on Peters Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Stoker, good evening, everyone, it's a pleasure to be before you again to present the beginning of year data for this school year. So, if we can go to our first slide, please, Dr. Stoker. So, this data represents the beginning of year ELA data at Peters Elementary School. You'll see that the data separates kindergarten, which is at top, first grade in the middle and second grade at the bottom. Once the students take the DIBELS VIII assessment, which is, this is the second year that we are giving this common assessment, K through six, that the students are broken into four different categories, well below benchmark, which is red, below benchmark, which is yellow, at benchmark, which is green and above benchmark, which is blue. The goal is that throughout the year, we will work with our teams to see that student improvement, that when we show that middle of the year and the end of the year benchmark, there will be more and more green and blue and less and less yellow and red. So, looking specifically at kindergarten, at this time, beginning of the year, 41% of students are considered well below benchmark, 24% are considered below benchmark, 21% are considered at benchmark and 14% are considered above benchmark. Just as a reminder to the board, this is at the very beginning of kindergarten before we've taught them anything. So, when we think about the beginning of the year data, we're looking at the very starting point of their entire school career. Looking at first grade, 26% of students are considered well below and 25% of students considered below. 38% of students are considered at benchmark and 11% of students are considered above benchmark. Together, 49% of students at or above benchmark, right around that 50/50, you know, cutoff there. And in second grade, 29% of students are considered well below, 13% are considered below basic, 29% of students are considered at the benchmark and 29% of students are considered above that benchmark. Combined, 58% of students are at or above benchmark. This data point is consistent with what we've seen in the past, the idea that before they come into school, you can see 65% of students are below or well below benchmark. Every year, you know, at all grade levels, likely we take a couple steps back over the summer, but each year, a little bit more, more students retain what they've learned. So, 50%, right around section 49% in first grade and 58% are starting at or above benchmark in second grade. Again, very consistent with what we've seen in the past. If we look underneath that, you will see the composite for the entire school over two school years. This year, 31% of our students are well below basic, 21% are below basic, 30% are at benchmark and 18% are above benchmark. When you compare this to last year's beginning of, the beginning of the year composite data, which is at the very bottom, the 24, 25, beginning of the year, we see improvements in all four categories. This year, we have 3% fewer students considered well below, 2% fewer students considered below benchmark, 1% more students that are considered at benchmark and 4% more students considered above benchmark. So, overall, between last year and this year as a school, from the beginning of the year, we've seen a 5% improvement. Next slide, please, Dr. Stoker. So, next, we'll actually take the same composite data, the schoolwide for the last two years and look at it in a sort of a new and interesting way. And we're going to compare that now to the national average of all schools that give that DIBELS VIII assessment. The top two represent the national average from the past two years related to all the students taking that assessment. You can see it's out of approximately 2.5 million students and 2.4 million students respectively. And of course, at Peters, at the bottom, you'll see it's out of 349 this year and 386. So, again, comparing our school to the nation. When comparing this year's Peters data to the national average, you'll see that Peters is literally at the national average. We have 4% fewer students that are well below, but then 4% more students that are below benchmark. We have 6% more students at benchmark, but 6% fewer students who are above that national average benchmark. So, again, we are at the national average, however, our concentration is more on the center of that graph rather than the outliers. So, we've got more students that are below or at benchmark and fewer students that are well below, but also fewer students that are above. When you compare that to last year and how our school rated compared to the national average, we actually have 5%, we were actually 5% below national average last year. So, if you compare us last year of being 5% below that national average to this year, we've made that five point gain, percentage points, again, comparing our school to 2.4 million students last year and 2.5 million students this year. But I thought that was an interesting data point because, you know, we always talk about local data, but you know, local data can be looked at, you know, comprehensively from a larger population. And the next slide, please, Dr. Stoker. This final slide represents the beginning of the year IXL math data for this school year. You'll see that consistent with the past few years, I'll be reporting just the first and second grade beginning of the year data. In the past, we spent so much time at the beginning of the year preparing students to take that online assessment that we basically gave that first data point at the middle of the year benchmark and at the middle of the year board meeting. This year, I'm very pleased to announce that because, if you recall, at the board level, we discussed purchasing our kindergarteners touchscreen Chromebooks. We do not have the data point ready for now, but right now, we are engaging in that assessment that we would usually first engage in, in January. So, my, what we'll do is at the middle of the year board update for the data, we will be able to report to you what it was at the beginning of the year, however, it wasn't taken on September 2nd or September 5th. It was taken, you know, the beginning of October, but that'll give us an extra data point to see where we're coming from and where we're going in kindergarten. So, some great news there. Looking at this data specifically, you will see that IXL, the data is in a pie chart with dark green representing students above grade level, light green representing students, representing students, excuse me, on grade level, yellow representing students below grade level and orange representing students far below grade level. The slice of gray represents students who did not take the assessment. At Peters, oftentimes those students are either special education students who do not engage in that assessment throughout the year or it represents students who either moved into our school district after the beginning of the year, but before the snapshot was complete, but did not take the snapshot. We certainly have current data on those students, but at the snapshot, it was not complete. So, what does the data show us? The data shows that 6% of first and second grade students began the year above grade level with 57% of students beginning the year on grade level, 21% of the students beginning the year below grade level and 4% far below grade level. Of those, you'll also see that 12% were not pinpointed. At the very bottom there, you'll see it broken down by first grade and second grade and you can see a comparison of this year's first grade and second grade. I encourage you just to look at the amount of dark green and green this year in first grade compared to last year and dark green and green this year in second grade compared to last year. So, we certainly see more green and dark green, which is what we, what our goal is, is each year improve, you know, the students that are at or above benchmark. This year in first grade, at the beginning of the year, 7% of students were above grade level and 63% of students were on grade level, meaning 70% of students entered the year on or above grade level. 24% of students were below grade level, 1% were far below grade level as of the snapshot, just two students in first grade and 5% at that time were not pinpointed. And in second grade, 4% of students were above grade level, 51% were on grade level, representing 55% of second grade being at or above, 19% of students below grade level and 6% far below with 20% not pinpointed. So, that's my data presentation for this evening, I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Ryan at Slantington Elementary School. Yes, Mr. Green?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
When you present data, I appreciate the fact that you present first grade, second grade, you know, kindergarten. I guess my concern would be, you have no control over what comes in in kindergarten, you get who you get, you know, and you do the best you can. But when you look at the next year, okay, where did kindergarten go when they went to first grade? Because when you look at first grade, I have no idea where they were in kindergarten, if you understand what I'm saying. So, when you make a presentation and you say first grade this year, I guess I would like to see where they were when they were in kindergarten the first day and see, have we made any significant improvements between, you know, K and one, one and two? And I mean, in your next presentation, maybe you could add something like that. I would like to see that, like, are we making improvement, not did second grade do better than first grade or kindergarten or whatever?
So, we do track that internally, so we do follow those students and cohorts through time. It gets a little bit difficult sometimes to report that and how students are moving through the system, but we do track that as part of our data meetings that we do internally in the buildings.
Okay.
If you could do something, I would appreciate it.
And that is a data point we absolutely can pull, we just have to do it with the understanding that the expectation as it goes along gets more challenging. So, for instance, in kindergarten at the end of the year and first grade at the beginning of the year, they didn't learn anything between the end of kindergarten and beginning of first grade, but the expectation went up. So, that's why we typically compare it by year to year, beginning to beginning, so we get a sort of a similar data point, but that's certainly a data point we can pull together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, everyone, it's great to see everyone this evening, I'm going to be presenting the data from Slantington Elementary School. The four slides I'm going to be presenting are similar to those that you just saw with Mr. Schneiderite at Peters, just reflecting the data at Slantington. So, this first slide here is Slantington Elementary School, grades three through five on our DIBELS VIII assessment. And this, this particular assessment is given to students in three through five at Slantington Elementary School. It is not given to sixth grade and that aligns with what the recommended, what's recommended according to our program, our tier one of reading and writing program, CKLA. So, on this slide, there is a glimpse of how grades three through five performed at the beginning of the year benchmark. It shows grades three at the top, four in the middle and five near the bottom before that break right there. And then at the bottom is the beginning of the year benchmark composite for the 24, 25 year and then this year. So, in third grade, 55% of students are currently at or above benchmark and that 55 comes from adding the green section and the blue section together. Okay, so, 55% are at or above while 45% are currently below or well below. In fourth grade, 52% of students are at or above currently while 48% are below or well below. And in fifth grade, 52% of students are. So when you make a presentation and you say first grade this year, I guess I would like to see where they were when they were in kindergarten the first day and see, have we made any significant improvements between, you know, K and one, one and two? And I mean, in your next presentation, maybe you could add something like that. I would like to see that, like, are we making improvement, not did second grade do better than first grade or kindergarten or whatever?
So we do track that internally. So we do follow those students and cohorts through time. It gets a little bit difficult sometimes to report that and how students are moving through the system. But we do track that as part of our data meetings that we do internally in the buildings.
Okay.
If you could do something? No, I would appreciate it.
And that is a data point we absolutely can pull. We just have to do it with the understanding that the expectation as it goes along gets more challenging. So for instance, in kindergarten at the end of the year and first grade at the beginning of the year, they didn't learn anything between the end of kindergarten and beginning of first grade, but the expectation went up. So that's why we typically compare it by year to year, beginning to beginning, so we get a sort of a similar data point, but that's certainly a data point we can pull together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Breiner.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone this evening. I'm going to be presenting the data from Slatington Elementary School. The four slides I'm going to be presenting are similar to those that you just saw with Mr. Schneiderreit at Peters, just reflecting the data at Slatington. So this first slide here is Slatington Elementary School, grades three through five on our DIBELS VIII assessment. And this particular assessment is given to students in three through five at Slatington Elementary School. It is not given to sixth grade. And that aligns with what's recommended according to our program, our Tier One of Reading and Writing Program, CKLA. So on this slide, there is a glimpse of how grades three through five performed at the beginning of the year benchmark. It shows grades three at the top, four in the middle, and five near the bottom before that break right there. And then at the bottom is the beginning of the year benchmark composites for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and then this year. So in third grade, fifty-five percent of students are currently at or above benchmark. And that fifty-five comes from adding the green section and the blue section together. Okay, so fifty-five percent are at or above, while forty-five percent are currently below or well below. In fourth grade, fifty-two percent of students are at or above currently, while forty-eight percent are below or well below. And in fifth grade, fifty-two percent of students are at or above currently, while forty-eight percent of students are currently well below or below. Overall, as a school, in grades three through three through five, we're fifty-three percent of students at or above benchmark, while forty-seven percent of students are currently well below or below. And in comparison to last year, we were forty-seven percent of students at or above benchmark, while fifty-three were well below or below. And this year, we've flipped that figure. So an increase of about five percent of students being at or above benchmark at the same time as last year in the beginning of the year benchmark. And it's likely attributed to the changes that we did in our Tier One program, Amplify CKLA, and the program and instructional practices that go along with that. So thank you for your support with that change. Next slide, please. On our next slide is the similar data in terms of looking at the national averages in comparing Slatington to the national average. And again, this is comparing, you know, our building to about this year, 1.5 million other students, and the year prior, about 1.35. So a large number, obviously. So when comparing these data points, the national average is on the top and Slatington's on the bottom of this slide. And again, we're looking at grades three, four, and five combined. As stated previously, Slatington had a forty-seven percent at or above in twenty-four, twenty-five as compared to the national average of fifty-three percent at or above. And at the beginning of this year, we jumped to fifty-three percent at or above, while the national average moved to fifty-five percent at or above. So while we're still slightly below the national average, we're definitely closing that gap. We've moved from, you know, basically being six percent below to now being two percent below. So we're moving and closing that gap. Next slide, please. This next slide is our IXL data, and it's looking specifically at our IXL data in ELA. It should be familiar to you as you saw with, from Peters, and we've shown you these data points in this particular slide in the past with past data. It provides a glimpse at the first snapshot in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for Slatington Elementary. All students at Slatington take this IXL snapshot, so this is grades three through six. And since we are only doing IXL, since it's the only benchmark data for sixth grade, or the IXL data point is the only benchmark for sixth grade, this is, you know, our main data point that we use to make instructional decisions in sixth grade. Students work daily in the program for ten to twenty minutes of their day in their own individualized recommendation plans and/or through assigned teacher lessons based on their data. And then they step into the arena weekly to update the data. But this is just our snapshot window data point that is being displayed here. This data provides a look at how all students at Slatington Elementary are performing in the beginning of the year, and according to the IXL, at this time, forty-seven percent of our student population is achieving at a grade level or above, while forty-nine percent of students are achieving below or far below grade level. And again, I'm getting that percentage by adding the green together and then adding the red and yellow together. We also have five percent that are not pinpointed. That's that little gray slice at the top, and they're not pinpointed for various reasons. Some students are part of an education, part of the special education department and don't use IXL for benchmarking purposes. And we also might have had some students that were absent, missed a window, start late, similar to Peters as well. Below the pie chart, you'll find the bar graphs, and that breaks the same data down by grade level, showing the composite for each grade level. Next slide, please. And this slide is the same exact data, but looking at it through the lens of math. Okay, so in math, IXL is our main data point. All students at Slatington Elementary in grades three through six will be assessed four times on the snapshot in IXL. They also go into the program for ten to twenty minutes daily in their own individualized recommendation plans and/or through teacher-assigned lessons based on their data. They will step into the arena, very similar to ELA, once a week to update their data. But again, this is only showing the snapshot and in the window of the snapshot. So this data provides a look at how all students are performing on the beginning of the year snapshot, and currently, according to IXL, forty percent of students are achieving at or above the grade level, while fifty-four percent of students are below or far below. There are also five percent of students that are not pinpointed. Again, this is for various reasons. They may be part of the special ed department and not using IXL for those purposes, or may have been absent, or also may have not been present during the window. Below the pie chart, you'll find the bar graphs that coincide with the different grade levels related to the data in the pie chart. And through the work being done at our monthly data meetings, which are by grade level and department within grade level, we are identifying instructional strands that are areas of concern and those that are areas of strength. And we are identifying specific work that is being done while leveraging the use of IXL to work in small groups to identify and work with, on those specific needs. And so that is my data presentation for this evening. If there's any questions? Okay, I will turn it over to Mr. Williams.
You're not officially the middle school principal yet. Can you make this presentation?
You know what, okay.
That's later on in the agenda.
It is. But you know what, I'll take one for the team here. So thank you, Mr. Breiner, I appreciate it. Good evening to our board members, good evening to the community. I'm Mr. Williams, and as alluded to, after some action tonight, the board agenda, I am excited to have the privilege of reporting our student data at the middle school as the new and what will be my first day as the Northern Lehigh Middle School Principal. So I'm very excited about that. As you heard described, the data that you're seeing here is our IXL data for ELA in math, as was described by Mr. Schneiderreit, by Mr. Breiner, so thank you guys for that explanation. You're seeing a similar representation of our data here at the middle school. When we take a look at our data for ELA, what you're seeing there in the pie chart is our total seventh and eighth grade all-student body performance. When we look at that, fifty-seven students, or what makes up twenty-three percent of our students, are above grade level in ELA. Twenty-one students, or eight percent, are on grade level. Thirty-five students, or fourteen percent, are below grade level. A hundred and twenty-five students, or fifty percent, are far below grade level, and you see the gray there as was described. We also have fourteen students, or six percent, that were not pinpointed. This data is actually very consistent with what we saw coming into the school year last year as well. We really only saw about a difference of one to three percent in each of those categories as we compare this year's data to last year's data. When we, one of the things that we do at the middle school is we like to take a look and dive a little bit deeper into the data, and what you can do is you can actually break this down based on different skills that are related to the standards. When we break down our data into standard-based skills, we see that vocabulary acquisition has emerged as one of our stronger areas. And this is important to note because that was a point of emphasis that we had in our building last year. So we saw that kind of emerge as an area that we were able to improve upon. When we take a look at it this year, reading level and reading strategies. So reading level, we had sixty-one percent of our students that were far below grade level, and in reading strategies, we had sixty-four percent of students that were far below. So these have emerged as focal points, and we're going to make sure that we target intervention for each of those areas. And we can go to the next slide then, please. When we look at our data in math, again, it's going to be represented in a similar way as to what we saw in ELA. Twenty of our students, or eight percent, are above grade level. Fifty-seven students, or twenty-three percent, are on grade level. Fifty-one students, or twenty percent, are below grade level. A hundred and eight students, or forty-three percent, are far below grade level, and you see the gray area there. We did have sixteen students, which make up six percent of our students, that were not pinpointed. Again, very similar, we're talking about compared to last year coming into the school year, a difference of about two to four percent in each category, so we're seeing very consistent data there. When we do the same thing and we break down by our standard-based skills, numbers and operations has emerged as our strongest area or one of our strongest areas. And again, this is important to note because that was an area that we made a focal point last year in our building. When we look at it this year, measurement is going to be an area that's going to emerge for us in math, and that's because we are seeing a beginning of seventy percent of our students far below grade level in that standards-based area. So we're going to make sure that we kind of take that and make that a focal point that we provide intervention. And so that's kind of the last piece that I want to talk about, what we do with this data, so you know, kind of turning this data into action at the middle school. So at the middle school, we're going to use this to inform our intervention in our instructional strategies. Throughout our year, we use a win period that we have during our day, which is about forty minutes long, and twice a week, we run intervention remediation and enrichment. We use this data to be specific with the groups that we develop. So for example, when we take a look at math in ELA, if you are in that red area far below grade level, you are going to be grouped based on that content area into an intervention group that's going to meet with those teachers and work through those skills and really dive down into those skills, and we're going to be doing that twice a week. If you would happen to be a student that would be far below in both, in marking period one, what we do is we target math. Marking period two, we then target ELA, so that we're making sure that we're hitting both content areas when we're doing that. Another way that we do this is we utilize the continuation within IXL and the work that our students do within IXL throughout the school year. And as we get close to the PSSAs, we really take a look at the yellow. So those are the students that are just below grade level, and we target them as what we would call bubble students. And those would be the students that we provide intervention because while we're giving intervention to the other students, we target them because we believe that if we give specific intervention, they're very close that we can get over to that proficient and advanced level. So those are some of the ways in which we utilize the data and the action that we take at the middle school. And that's my presentation for tonight, and I'd just like to make sure that there's not any questions. And if not, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bali for the high school. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good to see you as always. So I'm going to be reporting on the beginning of year benchmark data for our high school. Just remember, this assessment was given, actually, I went back, it was given the first week that we were in school, so the last week of August is when we gave our first snapshot. So absolutely no instruction whatsoever. The teachers like to get it out of the way so we can use it and get going as fast as we can. So if you look at the first slide, you will see the IXL ELA performance for the first benchmark, and this is broken down by grade level. Ours looks a little bit different because remember, the first three schools are looking at data across the entire school year. We are looking at data across two semesters. So we will have one group of kids for the semester one, which goes from the beginning or the end of August until mid-January, and then our second group of students picks up then and goes through June. So we have a lot of work to do in a condensed period of time, but we do have longer class periods, we have eighty-minute blocks. So, and you'll see the gray there on the end, and you'll see in the pie chart, we've completely removed them because our non-pinpointed kids, those students who did not take it, there's a lot of them, because they do not have either an English course or a math course. So we tried to just keep it as clean as we could for you, and you'll see that on the pie chart. So on this chart, you'll see that grade nine has the greatest number of students at or above grade level. And you will see there, and you can't, I don't have the numbers up there, but sixty-three students in ninth grade currently have an English course, fifty-one students in tenth grade currently have an English course, forty-one in eleventh grade, and sixty-three in twelfth grade. So if you click to the next slide, Dr. Stoker, thank you, you can see it now by proficiency levels. So the pie chart, again, represents all students who currently have an English class this semester. Nineteen point two percent of students are performing above grade level. This is up from about ten, this is up ten percent higher than last year. These students demonstrate strong mastery and readiness to tackle advanced standards, even at this point in the year, at the end of August. Twelve point three percent of students are currently on grade level, meeting expectations for academic proficiency. Almost thirteen percent of students are below grade level, indicating a need for targeted intervention and support, and about fifty-five percent of students are performing far below grade level, which represents our most significant area of concern and focus. So as Mr. Williams said, this information will drive our instructional decisions, our resource allocation, and intervention planning as we work to close learning gaps and move more and more students to proficiency and beyond. Next slide, please. Right now, this slide is showing us our IXL but in math by grade level. You will see that ninth grade has about the highest performance for the first benchmark broken out. There's ninety-two students that currently have a math course, seventy-three students currently in tenth grade have a math course, fifty-two in eleventh grade, and thirty-one students in twelfth grade. If you go to the next slide, we will show you the percentages there. The pie chart represents all students, again, who currently have a math class this semester. The initial assessment, the initial benchmark assessment, excuse me, reveals a significant need for academic support in math across the entire student body. Performance levels are distributed as follows. About one point two percent of students are performing above grade level. Eight point eight of students were on grade level at this time. Ten point four percent of students were below grade level, and a significant number of seventy-nine point five percent were far, far below grade level. Again, the one point two percent of students that were performing above grade level demonstrate strong mastery and readiness. Those that, ten point four percent of students below grade level indicated need for targeted intervention, and we have a large number there, seventy-nine point five percent, which represent our most significant area of concern and focus. Again, this information will drive our instructional decisions, especially during our intervention time, which you all know happens during lunch and learn, and we just continue to improve upon that and refine what we are doing for those kids during that time. Next slide, please. For our last slide, this looks a little bit different than last year. We typically use our CDT as a benchmark tool, but something that IXL has that CDT does not is enabling us to really drill down and make informed decisions with instruction and giving our kids practice on the key standards in which they're either doing really well on or need some reinforcement and practice on. So our new, we piloted a couple years ago, SEVAS by Miller &amp; Levine, they have a benchmark system as well, which includes the practice portion. So this year, we've given that SEVAS Biology Keystone Benchmark, and that's what this slide is showing. So you will see our biology performance on the end-of-course pre-test using our SEVAS Biology curriculum. Again, we are using this end-of-course exam three more times throughout the semester to show the level of growth and mastery of biology standards. The data shows that the most common score range was between twenty-eight and thirty-six percent. This is an expected outcome for a pretest, as it indicates students have had limited prior exposure to this specific course content. This is the first time these kids have ever had a biology class. This distribution is typical and successfully establishes a starting point for these students. It confirms that upcoming instruction will cover new material for most students. These pre-test scores are a valuable tool that will inform our instruction. They provide a clear benchmark to track student growth and measure the effectiveness of our instruction throughout the course of the semester. The goal will be to see a significant shift toward higher The goal will be to see a significant shift toward higher scores on subsequent benchmarks. So that is our biology. Again, this is a new benchmark system, so it's a little bit difficult to compare last year to this year, but it's one that because of the practice components within it, embedded within it, we think it's going to be, you know, a very valuable tool for our kids. So that's what I have. Any questions?
Yeah, Dr. Dobb.
Yes.
When will be the next time that we see a math score so we can see your progress?
Yes. So as the other principals said, our students, we call it, jump into the arena. So they are in, there is, there's a minimum time that students need to spend every week, similar to at the elementary and middle school. In the high school, they have to be on it at least fifteen minutes a day. And that, so they're constantly getting a quote score. But when it comes to like the benchmarks where we compare, you know, our students to other students and our students to themselves, we do it four times throughout the semester. So we will have, we have our initial one, we will have it again in November, we have it right before winter break and then we have it right before the kids take the keystones or right after the kids take the keystones. So our next one will be early November.
How does that compare to last year's scores from the beginning of the year to the end of the year?
Well, why did you ask that? So how our scores are comparing this year to those kids last year?
Very bad beginning of this year. So how did, how was it last year?
Very similar. However, in English, I would like to say that our scores and, and our scores went up. If you remember in our keystone scores last year, our literature scores went up significantly. Math, not so much. Math is a focus area. But it's interesting now that our, that our first benchmark for ELA, our scores, let's see, last year for above grade level, our students, we had ten percent of our students were above grade level. This year for English, our students were double that, twenty percent above grade level, which is significant. As far as on grade level, this year, we have twelve point three percent. Last year, nine percent. Below grade level, we want to see lower numbers, we had nine point five percent last year as compared to twelve point eight percent this year. And far below grade level for last year, we had almost six, we had sixty-six percent far below grade level and this year we have fifty-four percent. So we see significant improvement in ELA. Math, it's similar to what Mr. Williams said, there's like a two to three percent, you know, drop or increase as compared to last year at this time.
Hoping to see better math scores.
Hoping to see better. Well, and I'm hoping to see better math scores as we, like as you suggested, as we seek benchmark. You know, and that is going to be a real, and I think Mr. Williams mentioned this, you know, we've really tried to at our data meetings, I think we've had two so far. We look at the data and we've gotten pretty good at analyzing the data, but we haven't been great at action. Now what are we going to do about it? And that's what our focus is at every data meeting is let's spend a little time on this and most of the time on action. And a lot of that translates to what are we going to do in our classroom in core instruction? But then we have this beautiful time that we never had before, last year we did, for intervention for kids, where we can just build upon the great things we did last year and provide more opportunities and more structured and more required opportunities for those kids to get intervention because we have the time to do it. So I think we have the tools in place, now we just have to execute the plan. Thank you for the question.
That's all I have, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stoker. Business manager, Mrs. Malatorz.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Again, as stated by Natalie, Ms. Snyder down on the end, we currently do not have a state budget yet. We are over a hundred days into school year with no state budget. The House did pass a preliminary proposed budget, although the Senate is not in session. So, but we are hearing they were probably on opposite ends of the spectrum anyway. Local audit, I have our local auditors coming in the end of this month, the thirtieth, the thirty-first, and then Monday, November second, third, something like that, whatever that Monday is. They'll be in those three days. This is late for them. They're normally in mid, mid to end of September. So it's going to be real crunch time for me for the AFR and everything due by December first. So that's what's coming up in the business office. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to superintendent's report, Dr. Link.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Last month, we approved the retirement of one of our beloved school counselors, Mrs. Kelly Cromer at Peters Elementary School. This evening, I would like to share a little bit more about her tenure here in Northernly High School District and at Peters Elementary. So it's going to be a little bit of a prelude here and we're doing it a little bit different this time because we asked one of her friends and colleagues to share their thoughts on Mrs. Cromer. So we would like to share that out this evening as well. So excuse me because this is going to be a good one. Mrs. Kelly Cromer joined Peters Elementary in 2011 as our school counselor, stepping into a new role with determination and a genuine desire to serve. During her remarkable twenty-four years of service in the district, she became a steady and compassionate presence for students, staff, and families. Always ready with a listening ear, a smile, or word of encouragement. Her colleagues consistently describe, describe her as selfless, kind, and deeply dedicated. She not only supported our students inside the building, but also extended her care to the community through countless service projects. Even through personal challenges, Kelly showed resilience and strength, continuing to put others first. In a final act of characteristic generosity, Kelly has chosen to forego a retirement appreciation gift, requesting that a donation be made on her behalf to the Sladdington Library, Sladdington Public Library. The message from her Peters family is clear. Mrs. Cromer has left an incredible legacy of compassion, service, and love. She will be deeply missed, but her light will continue to shine through all those she has touched. Perhaps the best, perhaps the best way to celebrate Kelly is to share the letter written by her friend and colleague, Ms. Michelle George, a beloved kindergarten teacher at Peters Elementary. Ms. George shares the following. Mrs. Cromer arrived at Peters, or should I say embarked on her new adventure in the fall of 2011. She enthusiastically dove in, having no idea what the role of a guidance counselor looked like in a K-2 building at that time. And Kelly didn't just take on the role of counselor, she was tenacious in her desire to be the best guidance counselor she could be. Not only did she show up daily, ready to assist students and staff wherever she could, but she also took on the role of a student herself, going to school at night to become a certif, to become certified as well as grow into an even better version of her new self. And that she did. Throughout the years, Mrs. Cromer has been a constant stabilizing force at Peters. And all the while, she has done her job, which I would describe more as her passion, with genuine care, compassion, and knowledge. Kelly has worn many hats throughout the year and with every hat, she has worn a sincere smile. No matter what was happening in her day, she would always make time to connect with staff and students, offering words of encouragement, dispensing her expertise, or to simply be a listening ear. It's no secret that in the past few years, she has lived through some of the toughest times a person can live through. And yet, without fail, she would steadfastly return to her Peters family and jump back in to helping anyone who was in need. Kelly's bravery, strength, and the way that she put all others above herself did not go unnoticed. She's the type of person who everyone in education should aspire to be like. I'd like to end with a borrowed quote. A candle's flame diminishes not when it's light, well, not when it lights another, but rather it multiplies the light around it. Kindness and knowledge work the same way. The more you share, the brighter the world becomes. Mrs. George ends with, thank you, Kelly, for being the flame which brightened the world around you and always asked, and all, and allowed us to bask in your glow. We are better humans because of you. You are loved dearly and will be missed immensely. Have fun writing the next chapter. So on behalf of the entire faculty, support, staff, and administration, we wish Mrs. Cromer well as she transitions into retirement near the end of the month. And before I move on to the next part of my update, I'll just look to Mr. Schneiderite. Is there anything as building principal that you would like to share, sir?
Mrs. George nailed it. You know, I, obviously, Mrs. Cromer doesn't come to all the meetings, but hopefully many of you have had the opportunity to meet her. Just that Kelly makes me better, makes all of us better. And I'm very, I'm very excited to welcome our new counselor who's going to be on the agenda this evening. But, you know, I'm certainly going to miss Mrs. Cromer. And she's a part of the family and will always be part of the Peters family. So, thank you, Dr. Link.
Thank you. Next, I would like to share some information about a donation that has recently been gifted to the Northernly High Middle School. Our former middle school principal, Mr. David Hauser, has donated his collection of Sladdington and Northernly High historical memorabilia to the middle school to be used part of, part of the social studies curriculum. His donation includes postcards, letterhead, envelopes, stationery, primary source documents, books, trade cards, a Sladdington chalkboard, antique issues of the slate, photographs, graduation programs, and school patches. Additionally, he is donating the display case that all of these items are currently housed in. We are extremely appreciative of Mr. Hauser's generation, generous donation estimated to be valued at seven hundred to one thousand dollars. It will ensure the history of the school district and Mr. Hauser's appreciation for the history of the school district and the community as a whole are preserved in the middle school for generations to come. And that concludes, that concludes my report this evening, sir.
Any questions for Dr. Link? No? Okay. I would like to report that we did have an executive session at six o'clock this evening. We had the basic personnel items, couple of legal items, et cetera. And also at our Monday, last Monday night's committee meeting, there was a special executive session called at five fifteen. And again, we discussed some personnel items. So there was one last Monday and, and one again this Monday, just for the record. Okay? All right. Having said that, we'll move to personnel. We got a whole bunch of items there. Is there a motion to approve the personnel items?
No motion.
Second.
Any questions on the personnel items? Anyone? No? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered, where are we? We're down to policy, I think. Am I something incorrect? Policy items, we have two policy items. Is there a motion to approve, motion to approve those items?
Second.
I'll let you say who got the motion, the second.
Rhonda was first, I was second.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the policy? I think we reviewed them. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered. Got a couple of conferences there. Motion to approve conferences.
Motion.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Any questions on the conferences? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered. Curriculum instruction, there's quite a few things there again. Going on to page six, item aye. Is there a motion to approve those items?
No.
Was it Donna?
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered. I have nothing under old business. Anyone have any old business? No? We have two items under new business. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. In case anyone missed it, I would just like to point out that one of the items there is to withhold financing of, or payment to charter schools because the state hasn't passed the budget. So if they're not giving us money, it's kind of senseless for us to have to take money out of our pot to pay charter schools and we're not going to gain the money from the state. There isn't a whole lot we could do to push back. Maybe that's one of the little minor things that, that we can do. Thank you, Dr. Link, for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments on new business? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered. Financial items. Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't move.
Second.
My first was.
You're ahead of me. Am I going too slow? We have a motion by Ms. Friends to approve the financial items. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Next, we'll move to legal. Couple of items under legal. A motion to approve those items.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. And so ordered. Moving on to the last page, any correspondence at this time? Anyone? Anything? Crime secretary, no? Information, we got a couple of items there, which basically are the minutes of the meetings, recognition of guests. And there is a guest that would like to be recognized this evening, sir. If you state your name for the record, please.
Yes, it's me. At the podium or, should I go to the podium?
You can, sure.
I was wondering if the board could give us an update on some of the maintenance items that were outlined back in June during the budget meetings that were kind of presented as necessary to be done sooner rather than later.
You're talking about back in June when we were doing?
Yeah, there was a three-tier list that some things were more important than others if the school board has had any further discussions. I've been trying to do some research and find out if that topic has been brought up at all.
Yes, we have been talking about some of those items. Do you want to take that, Mr. Mann?
Sure, I am happy to respond to that. And then, Mr. Mann, if you want to add to it at all. Myself, Mr. Mann, and building-level administration have been doing building walkthroughs. Near the end of this month, myself, Mr. Mann, and all school board members that would like to join us, we're going to be doing walkthroughs with the school board. And then our list of most immediate recommendations all the way through ten years out will be presented to the board as part of the budgetary process going into the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development.
I know it was discussed and other people have brought it up. It's kind of becoming the running joke on how bad the water is at the middle school. And now that we're being told the kids are just giving out bottles of water during the day. I thought this was approved and going to be taken care of before the school year even started, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know why anybody would think this is acceptable to come out of a public water fountain in the school district. The running joke is now, we want to change our school mascot logo from Bulldogs and pronounce how it's changed or spelled out, but we can't take the time to fix a water situation. It's kind of embarrassing when students and teachers alike are both laughing at how bad our water is at that middle school. But yet, we're worried about how our mascot looks and how it's pronounced on logos.
I can see, I share your concerns. I know there have been ongoing discussions with the borough of Sladdington. There have been ongoing discussions with the water purification people. And again, I'm not doing that on a day-to-day basis. If either of you would like to make a comment on that, you're welcome to do so. But it is a concern and it hasn't gone away. You're absolutely correct. I understand it.
If that water came out of your fountain at your kitchen sink on any of your homes, you would not wait six months to get it fixed?
It's been, I can tell you it's being worked on, but you could.
Sure. So the equipment has been ordered, built, and delivered. It's currently on site. Replacement has started today. It will end tomorrow.
Okay.
And when you are doing a full building water softener installation, it takes time just to have the equipment built and delivered.
Understood.
So that has begun. It has also been ordered for Sladdington Elementary, the high school as well, the other two buildings. And we do active water testing and all, and I agree with you, Mr. King, it does not look pleasant.
I know it passes. That's quotable. We've tested it. This came out of the fountain back on the meet-the-teacher night. So I know it does test, it passes, but looking at that in a cup, no one would be.
I don't disagree with you, sir.
Willing to drink that or want to drink that, so.
Your timing may be good on that if this stuff was delivered today, you know, come back and talk to it. back and talk to us next month.
Yeah, great news. Great news. Hopefully, everything works out, and if it's a replaceable filter that we can keep up with, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, real quick. I just add on to what Mr. King said. So with the improvements that we're doing, was there any studies or looked into, like how our lateral is going out to the main? You know, is there a lot of sediment sitting there? I know we used to do a lot of flushing. I don't think that happens anymore.
We were doing external flushing in conjunction with the burrow. They have since removed that device. We do internal flushing every morning prior to student arrival.
Okay. All right. I just know that you can put a $10,000 softener on it, but if you have a half a pipe full of sediment, you're kind of shooting a barrel.
I'm sorry. I have a question, because when I went to the Sladington Board meeting, they said that the water authority said that the line coming from the main line in was the problem. Is that not so?
Are we going to entertain those that did not sign up this evening, sir?
Just state your name for the record, ask the question. You should, you should sign in and say you want to ask a question.
The only reason it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't...
I understand.
My name is Crystal Billby, and I was at the Sladington that had the water authority there, and they were saying that it's not a Sladington problem because it goes from their main, our main, into the building is the problem. So, and they said that the board was aware of that situation, so I was a little concerned when we were just putting a softener in versus missing the line that may be the problem.
I can certainly state as a board member, I am not aware of that situation. I have never been informed of that by anyone. Whether there were ongoing conversations with anyone else, I don't know, but I am not aware of that. If any other board members heard that, you know, I have not. I have not heard that it was the incoming line. You know, I've heard some other accusations, but I've never heard that one, so.
I think that maybe we should then maybe talk to the water authority and find out if that softener, we're going to spend all this money for the softener, and it's not going to change the color of the water. You know, it might be something delusional.
I can tell you, there are ongoing conversations, there's ongoing work, there's work being done, and like they said, the filtration system was developed, it was delivered ironically very recently, and they are working on putting it in. It's not something we're ignoring. We're not just walking away from it and saying, you know, "Too bad you got dirty water, that's it." So we're working on it, but, so, thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Okay. If not, any other business that needs to be attended to? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Did someone say something or just a motion? Okay, thank you, Gary.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, posed no. And we are done here. Thank you. Thank you.